Yeah, I'll call the meeting to order. Uh, roll please, Michelle.
Abbott.
Here.
Caleronia.
Here.
Canisius.
Here.
Geneseo.
Here.
Groflin.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Lima.
Here.
Livonia.
Here.
Mount Morris.
Here.
North Antioch.
Here.
Nanday.
Here.
Ashen.
Here.
Portage.
Here.
Sparta.
Here.
Springwater.
Here.
West Sparta.
Here.
York.
Here.
I'd like to ask Mr. Gaff to please read us in the classical reasons.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's Board of Supervisors meeting will be livestreamed on the county's YouTube channel, Official Livingston County New York. All livestreams will be accessible directly through the YouTube channel and on the county's website under the Agenda, Minutes, and Broadcast button. Livestreaming technology allows the online audience to see and hear those in the boardroom via video and audio. To provide the best audio experience possible, please be sure to position yourself close to the microphone when you are speaking. We have, uh, next to any general approval of minutes from the October 28th regular board meeting? Is there any questions or discussion on these minutes? Hearing none, I look for a motion in a second, please.
Move.
Second.
Chair.
We have a motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Next, we have, uh, two public hearings this afternoon. I'd ask Angela to please come up, uh, on the Ag District hearing, inclusion of the proposed modifications.
Thank you, Chairman. As you may be aware, effective September 17th of 2004, the New York State Agriculture and Markets Law was amended with Section 303B, uh, which allows for parcels to be added into the agricultural district program on an annual basis. Uh, the Livingston County Board of Supervisors, this board had designated the month of September as the 30-day annual period for submission of petitions, uh, by landowners, um, asking to join an existing agricultural district. This year, three petitions, uh, for inclusion of predominantly viable agricultural land within a certified agricultural district, uh, were filed with the Livingston County Board of Supervisors. Uh, these, uh, parcels comprise about 81 and a half acres and are in the towns of Oshin and Springwater. There are three parcels. Uh, pursuant to, uh, New York State Ag and Markets, uh, law, the, the County Agricultural and Farmland Protection Board reviewed the petitions on October 15th, and, uh, they determined, uh, that all three parcels, uh, for inclusion in the agricultural district, uh, consist of predominantly viable agricultural land, and that inclusion in the district would serve a public interest, uh, by assisting in maintaining a viable agricultural industry, uh, within the agricultural district program for our county. Uh, this public hearing today is to allow for the public to comment on the consideration of these three petitions, uh, to modify the agricultural district three and the recommendation from the County Agricultural and Farmland Protection Board.
Thank you, Angela. I declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on this public hearing at this time? Any supervisors wishing to comment? This public hearing will stay open throughout the meeting and we'll be asking these questions again before we close the hearing. We also have a second public hearing this afternoon, and I'd ask, uh, County Administrator Coyle to please present, uh, 2021 budget.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, my, my presentation will be a little bit longer than Angela's, but not too long. Wanted to give you a little bit of an overview of the draft tentative, uh, county budget that you have seen already as a board member, some of you in the public have seen as well. It's been on our website, uh, for about 19 days. Uh, before that, it was various iterations of this, uh, very similar document. Wanted to give you an idea about how we got here, uh, not to go through all of them, but just to go and show you what goes into the goal-setting process each year of the county budget. Again, budget process, the last thing, uh, I will note is obviously new, and that is, uh, an attempt by the board, which the board was successful in doing, in, uh, maintaining county services in this, uh, overused term, new normal, but in the COVID-19 environment. So both operationally, how we're impacted, economically, how we're impacted, and I guess in the community and in society, how we're impacted, and how's the county respond to that? Well, uh, we were able to do so satisfactorily, as you can see in this budget. Uh, the current status report, uh, we have a whole slew of COVID-19 impacts. Not so much, uh, as a budget impact as, as you might actually think. I mean, you have a expense impact and a revenue impact, that's the budget. Expense-wise, you really have, you know, FEMA coming into play when you talk about reimbursements. You talk about the federal government helping us out a little bit with the CARES Act, but not to the extent of counties over 500,000 population. And then we have our own resources that we're able to use. So the combination of all of that helped out with the, the new items that we had to procure, the things that we had to do, those, those new expenses. And then other things that were of impact during the year, uh, the board, uh, in working with myself and the department heads, did a, a series of moves that allowed us to maintain the position that we're in, to kind of weather the, the present storm and hopefully the future storms, and, and get through this better on the other side. So that kind of, uh, is the surplus deficit estimate of the year. If we weren't making those moves, if we didn't make those moves, if we didn't have FEMA reimbursement coming, if we didn't have help from the state and some of the partnerships, uh, we would have more of a deficit than a surplus, operationally, for the current year. Cause that's really your springboard or lack thereof for the next year. Uh, sales tax is on the revenue side of things, besides state aid, which I'll talk a little bit more about, is our biggest impact area. Uh, we were forecasting to be down a lot. Then we got prior period adjustment that was in our favor, and we were the highest in October versus last October in the entire state. They made another adjustment maybe 10 days ago, and that adjustment was about minus 15% for us. We were like the third highest bad adjustment in the entire state, so in a 30-day stretch. Uh, so, sales tax has, has its reconciliations, adjustments, anomalies, abnormalities, all of that, that is really a best guess. So our, our right, our number right now for a budget is right around 32 million, which I'll talk about in a second. But over the summer, we did a refinance and we took advantage of some good rates. Uh, we reaffirmed our bond rating, 19, we ended the year, 2019, uh, year-end seems like about 10 years ago. Uh, but we had a clean audit opinion then, and we got good fiscal stress scores. Uh, always start with the highlights, tax rate is 7.99 per thousand. Uh, it is four cents more than the current rate. Uh, the tax levy goes up about 1%. The 2% tax cap is, as you all know from the town, uh, a bit of a misnomer. It's number two, it's sometimes four and sometimes one. This year for us was about one and a half, maybe 1.75. So we kind of butted up against that going up about 1%. Uh, so when people say, do your taxes go up? For the most part, they will. The whole amount of taxes that we collect is going up, and the rate that's applied to any piece of property is going up. The latter's going up a little bit less, it's only about a half a percent. So if your assessment stayed the same, that rate's only going up about, uh, four cents per thousand. So we are compliant with the tax cap. Uh, no service changes, which I probably have that slide, or that piece of the slide every year. I think it's more meaningful and more of impact this year because of everything that's going on. Uh, the flat, we have a flat sales tax, which means our budget didn't change. We hope sales tax is not flat, we, you know, we want it to increase every year. It probably, sales tax in Livingston County has a 20-year pattern of about 3.5% increases every single year, except for two years, uh, one the last 12 months, and the other one being the, the, the height of the recession from 2009 and 10. We also took our contingency, which is historically about $450,000. That's a, uh, an individual budget account, that's a kind of a individual rainy day fund, operationally, for the year. We took that to $1 million even, mainly because of state aid. Uh, we don't know yet where that's gonna go, so we bumped that up considerably. But we maintained all programs and departments and services. We maintain the capital improvement plan, distribution. And earlier in the year, we adopted a early retirement incentive to try to shave some costs over the next, uh, couple of years. Um, these are the numbers, uh, things that, that, that people look to is, you know, how mu- how much in total are you collecting in total dollars? Where, um, I didn't have a goal to stay under 30 million, although that's what it looks like. Uh, 29,999,065. So that's our, all of the property taxes that we're gonna collect next year, that's what they total. Um, our total spending is down a little bit for a variety of reasons. Uh, some of that's capital, sometimes that's grant, and sometimes that's actual spending. And then our assessed value is how much, uh, the property's worth in the county, and then leading to a tax rate. So I mentioned that, average single-family home, $135,000, we're talking about $5. Uh, that's the tax levy. If we were to go up 2%, we would've collected $600,000 total. If we would've gone up 3%, we would've collected $900,000 more. Um, that's what every, uh, one represents. The all-funds budget's down a little bit for the reasons I, I went through. Our fund balance utilization, uh, and the general fund is in line with past years. And this is the first time we've been able to actually budget that mortgage recording tax that this board and previous boards fought very hard to get, to kind of help offset the property tax impact. We got through the legislature, we got that through the legislature, I think December of 19 for a January effective date. We didn't budget it this year, so we received it, and we actually were able to budget it for 21. Here's where the, the budget backdrop on sales tax. So 2020, we budgeted less than we actually got in, in 2019. So we were sitting pretty, cause if everything was gonna be good, we probably would've got more than this number in this year. Well, that's not gonna happen. That's just frankly not gonna happen. Uh, so, COVID-related, internet sales tax helps. So we're getting a lot of money from the internet sales tax that we didn't used to get. What doesn't help is the state is using our sales tax money to pay towns and villages, the state aid, nothing against towns in particular, but nothing against villages either. Uh, but that used to come from the state, and, uh, the state paid for it from state resources. And now county resources are being used to pay for that. Uh, and then so our forecast, as you can see, budget, budget essentially, it stays the same. Uh, so the hope is that we can have some growth there. The COVID-19 impact is, is, uh, substantial. State aid, we have uncertainty. What we have is the state telling us that they're withholding, subject to federal revenue, a lot of our reimbursements. You're due $100,000 from the state, you have a contract for that $100,000, likely you're gonna get $80,000 from the state, and they're gonna make a notation on your paperwork that says $20,000 in legalese may or may not come. And they're, they're hinging it on federal stimulus that, if you've read the papers, is very much up in the air. Health insurance, we're self-insured. Uh, we, that has, has paid dividends the last couple of years. Um, in, in this present budget year, we're able to actually have a decrease in rates for the first time in, in my, in my time here, that we've actually had a decrease in rates. We've had flat years, low increase years, but never down. Uh, CNR is, is, is stable, uh, in the public nursing home environment, that's a win. Uh, so we have some stability there. They're able to draw down the IGT from the federal government, although we have some concerns because the IGT is down. Uh, almost, almost 50% went from like eight and change to four and change, million dollars from the feds. So it's still there, but it went down. And then I gotta, uh, give props to the departments. Uh, they all came in with, uh, you saw other counties, other places, uh, and there's, there's reasons for doing this, but, you know, 5% reduction, 10% reduction, 20% reduction. Um, I didn't have to do that, I didn't actually wanna do that. I wanted them to sort of own the budget process and come in with a, a reasonable budget, but actually one that kept the local share as flat as possible versus the previous year. And every person to, uh, 32, uh, department, a man and woman, were able to do that. Uh, so here's our mandates in New York State impacts. I mentioned the withhold. We have some defense to that, which is the contingency. So if we have a whole series of cuts that turn into cuts that aren't really just withholds, we have some contingency. That's not able to handle an across-the-board cut. So some departments budgeted that, some departments are frankly just gonna have to deal with that. And they've already, you know, they're already aware of that, building plans around that. Como is awaiting decision on federal stimulus. Medicaid, uh, we still have a sizable chunk of our budget. It's worth mentioning every year, we have relief, it's been flattened, it's, uh, static, if you will. Uh, but it's nowhere else in the United States of America does a county government our size have to budget from their own taxpayers, $9 million almost, for a Medicaid bill. Uh, there's nowhere else that that exists in the entire United States of America. Uh, community colleges, we have, still have a sizable expense. Uh, that depends on enrollment, it's enrollment and rates. The rates went up, in some cases, over 20%. So if that enrollment stays the same or goes up, we're in for it with particularly, uh, GCC, cause that's the one that went up quite a bit. Uh, the sales tax swap impacts us by 800,000. There is a resolution on the agenda today that speaks to that. Projects and initiatives that the budget has some, uh, you know, interface to. Uh, quite a few of them going on, we, we have a study that now we're, we're looking to implement. Elements of the water study, uh, sheriff's office training complex, uh, 408, the work of the Livingston County Land Bank Corporation, we've got a meeting tomorrow, we've got projects in the pipeline. Uh, one thing that got delayed a little bit was the CNR dialysis partnership with Wyoming County, but after the first year, we planned to have that, uh, going live, so kind of back at it. So we'll have that restoration of service there that was lost, uh, for a long period of time. We had a downtown planning effort the last couple days that went really well. Uh, shared services, I don't know if the state's actually gonna pay us if we file our shared services plan, but, um, we didn't budget for it. So we don't have an expectation that we'll get a dime. But we're gonna put in a request, it's got several hundred thousands of dollars worth of, an ask of the state. And then finally, uh, broadband, we're gonna have an update on that at the public services meeting. Normally, you get a yea or a nay decision on a federal grant. Uh, we expect that we'll be somewhere in the middle of that decision, maybe have an opportunity to, uh, cure our application, but we don't know that yet. Uh, we'll, hopefully by Thanksgiving, we get an answer on that application. That's a $17 million broadband application. This is what the budget looks like across all the funds. Um, CNR being our, our, our biggest individual enterprise, and called the Enterprise Fund. General Fund, the catch-all, and then we've got a couple of smaller funds there that make up other percentages. As I mentioned, the CIP continues. Um, we budget about a million dollars a year to set aside for various projects that over five years through grants, uh, federal loans, federal resources, state resources, and that local county dollars, and then anything that's left over, totals at least 12 million of investment opportunity, depends on what we're actually gonna be able to trigger, over the next five years. And there's just some sample of some things that we, uh, got in the pipeline. So what's going well and what's good news? Decrease in health insurance, first time in, in recent memory. Um, sizable increase, probably a seven-figure, uh, decrease. Probably a seven-figure savings to the county as a whole, across all the departments and all the people that participate in health insurance. Internet sales tax growth, the last report, that was up like 500%. Uh, and that was early in 2020. So I think as we've gotten more used to it, with people unfortunately not being able to do a lot of personal shopping and patronizing businesses in person like they used to, a lot more online activity. Um, it is something to write home about, that maintenance and stability of county services remains part of our equation this year, because in some places, that's not the case. And CNR being sustainable and stable is a big plus for the county. And really, the, the fences that were hardened at that facility to, uh, for the most part, prevent the infiltration of the virus to date into getting in there at any great levels is a testament to the staff over there. Uh, so stuff that's not so hot, that remains on our radar. Those withholds, I anticipate those turning into cuts. That's a problem, we gotta figure that out. That sales tax diversion's a problem. I don't think our resolution, as much as I really encourage you to pass it today, um, will convince the state legislature to, uh, you know, turn that around, but we, you know, we gotta keep up the pressure on it. The continued uncertainty is, uh, stays out there. And then this lack of direct and flexible federal aid is a big issue. Um, and for two reasons. One is the federal government gave counties over 500,000 a lot of money. Monroe County got 100 to 125 million dollars. The problem is, it carries with it restrictions on how you can use the money. So Monroe County's sitting on probably 100 million dollars that they cannot spend. So the whole system, from the feds to the state to the counties of certain size, was kind of screwed up. And we didn't get anything as far as direct and flexible aid at all. Pushed for some CARES Act money, which we got, because we happen to be a fairly robust service provider. If we didn't have hospice, public health, mental health, EMS, and the CNR, we would've been like Madison County or some of these other counties who got 15 grand from the feds. I think we got 600,000 dollars, 700,000 dollars. But again, we're pushing for more direct and flexible federal aid, regardless of size. Uh, and what else happened was, states got a huge pot of money. And what they did was they gave money to those counties that were under 500,000 population that didn't get any money. New York State has decided to maintain and retain all of that money. Unlike the vast majority of states who have given the small counties in their state some chunk of change. And these are the significant concerns and problems on the horizon. Um, we all heard this term in '08, '09, '10, too big to fail. That was for the, some of the banks and some of the auto institutions. Uh, we're now at a point right now where there's opinion articles out there, uh, state and city governments are too big to fail, right? Because there's some that are on the brink. Uh, our state actually might be one, if you really peel back a few of the layers, because of what they're relying on. But you can see across the, this was in August, uh, from NACO, 202 billion dollar COVID impact across counties. Um, and then the comptroller recently put out a report in the summer about the local government revenue challenge. We know what they are, but when you're a, a, a city, you're a little bit different. You've probably got some like business taxes, you've got maybe a local sales tax, you might have a local income tax, you got tourism taxes. So you got a whole slew of things that you're worried about. County, you're talking sales primarily, then state aid, and then to a lesser extent, you know, motel, hotel taxes. Uh, finish up here, last couple slides. Fund balance position, uh, is good, we have extra contingency. So these are the, these are the things that you do every single year. And this is a once-in-a-hundred-year pandemic, so this was the rainiest of days that justify why you have rainy day funds. So why this, this board's decisions in 15, 16, 17, and 18 were the reason why we got through what we experienced in 2020. Uh, so the sales tax numbers, in '21 budget is actually less than we got in, in '19. So we're basically, we're kind of asking the economy to return to 2019 activity in 2021. I don't think that's too big of an ask, hopefully we have that rebound. We've got good reserves, we've got good expense forecasts from the departments, and the jail revenues, which I did tinker with, but we actually still are able to use those to put back into our reserves. So we're budget, we're compliant, um, we have a slight increase in the tax rate. If people, constituents ask you, are taxes going up? They are, and here's why. Is the tax rate going up? Yes, it is, here's why. Uh, we were able to sustain the cultural and nonprofit support, um, partners, uh, you know, we have representation from Livingston Arts, Cornell Cooperative, the library system, you know, Soil and Water. Uh, you know, they're, they're kind of buried in a 165 million dollar budget, but they're there and they were sustained. You know, we did have some conversations with some of those people about our ability to do that, but that was sustained. Uh, and then I'm not gonna read this, but just gonna, I wanna leave that up there, because, you know, throughout all of this, you know, what has resonated is the work of the staff and the, you know, public sector workforce, not really budget-related, but look, budget impacts all of us and how we budget, but we're really budgeting to fund services, and services are delivered by people. We don't have any robots out there doing, you know, social services and public safety. So, um, that, that was something that we put out early on during the, you know, pandemic response, but kind of leave that up there as kind of the, the thank you during this budget process has been on the, the work of the county staff and kind of making things work here in the last, you know, nine months or so. So, that's all I have, so thank you.
Thank you, Ian. At this time, with the, with the budget hearing open, I'd ask if there's any members of the public, uh, wishing to comment on the budget. Uh, you know, please come forward, sit at the podium and, um, you know, say whether you're for or against the county budget.
Good afternoon, hi, thank you. Um, my name is Deb Bump, and I'm with the Genesee Valley Council on the Arts. And I'm here today just to take a minute of your time to say thank you so much for the, your generous support to our organization. Um, I was actually scheduled to give a presentation to your group back on, I think it was March 25th, which of course was, uh, canceled at that time. And I was going to tell you about all of the great events we had planned for the year and how excited we were for the things we had planned, which all, of course, were subsequently canceled. Or what we really tried to do was shift things to an online format, like so many other organizations did. Um, and we were able to find some success with our exhibits and events moving online. So we are really happy that we're able to at least continue that, um, arts administration, um, for the public, for the community. Um, so, one of our, uh, programs that we really found success with online was our migrant arts education program. Uh, since our arts instructors couldn't travel throughout the region to provide the arts to the migrant workers, they moved to a video format, online teaching. And that really was very successful, um, not just in our, our region and their migrant education program, but actually programs throughout the state picked up our videos. So really, the reach was broadened with that program. So if there are some, you know, silver linings throughout the year, that was one of them. And a lot of the things that we learned going online and doing exhibits online and things, uh, our things will continue to do going forward. And then the last thing I'll say is throughout the year, I spent a lot of time on Zoom calls, as I'm sure many of us did, uh, with directors from arts organizations throughout the state. And I can just say that I did not hear from another single person or representative throughout the state that receives the type of support that we receive here in Livingston County. So we appreciate it so much, we are so thankful, um, not just for the financial support, but for our, our facility, our building as well. Um, so just thank you so much, it's much appreciated. Stay tuned for 2021 for some good things hopefully to come. Thank you very much.
I'll ask at this time if there's any other members of the public wishing to comment on, uh, proposed county budget for 2021. I'll ask if there's any supervisors wishing to comment on, uh, Mr. Pignaglio.
Mr. Chairman, I want to take a minute here to talk about the 2021 budget. This budget's been a challenge, as we all know, sitting around this room, with not knowing what the state of New York is gonna do, and if we're gonna get the full amount that we're supposed to get from, or a reduction by 20%. And I have to say, the way this was crafted, to maintain what we currently have for our residents, we didn't drop a beat. Maintaining the others, and et cetera. And I have to admit that there is a lot of thought and a lot of hard work put into it. And not, not to forget that we also are gonna fund projects in 2021, 2022, 2023. So Ian, I want to give you a lot of accolades for the job that you did. You orchestrated this beautifully. And I would like to thank you personally, and all the department heads for all your hard work. Thanks. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Pignaglio. Is there any other supervisor wishing to comment at this time? And this hearing, like the other hearing, will remain open, and I'll ask those same questions later in the meeting. Uh, next we have some communications, please, Michelle.
The next conversation with the county will be for the town of Canisius, Tuesday, December 1st, at 7:00 PM at the Town Hall, 6210 South Alone Road, Canisius. County Administrator E and M Coyle filed the proposed 2021 Livingston County budget on October 30th, 2020. County Administrator E. M. Coyle filed the proposed 2021 Livingston County Budget on October 30th, 2020. Your town bond and indebtedness report is due today. Receipt of notifications from the villages of Avon, Caledonia, Danville, Geneseo, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, and Nande requesting the county treasurer collect delinquent village taxes for the year 2020, 2021. And receipt of town abashan notice of public hearing for draft comprehensive plan and zoning update.
Thank you, Michelle. Next, we have the introduce, introduction of, of vocal law. And I'd like to ask Mark Brohl, please come up to the podium and, uh, introduce this to the court.
Good afternoon, everyone. As you know, in Livingston County, we have our own sanitary code. And what that does is it really further finds the corresponding elements of the state sanitary code, really. So it's, it's a better fit for us, okay? And so with this current proposal, we, uh, we knew, we knew we had some needs from, from past practice, and we're doing this with the oversight and input with the county attorney. So the, the sections of the sanitary code that we've proposed to fortify have to do with septic systems, uh, food service establishments, uh, rabies response, and nuisance evasion. And we've done this by adding definitions and making changes to be more consistent with the state sanitary code when appropriate. And I can also tell you that we've looked at, um, adjoining counties with similar demographics to ensure that we're doing things that are really in line with them, and we look for that for, for consistency. So we've taken a close look at that. And I can also tell you that one of the primary goals with these changes is to really better position ourselves when we have, uh, an enforcement scenario. Okay, so that's, that's the short version, and if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, uh, an abstract of claims.
Mr. Pinguin Grazio, approving abstract of claims 11A, November 12th, 2020.
Mr. Chairman, I move this abstract of claim to ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pinguin Grazio. Is there any questions on this abstract of claims? Hearing none, but we'll conclude, Michelle.
Avon, Caledonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Brooklyn.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 2009 adopted.
Next, we have several resolutions on the preferred agenda for your consideration.
Proclaiming the month of November is National Hospice Palliative Care Month. Providing the public hearing on post-local occupancy 2020 sanitary code of the county of Livingston. Providing for a public hearing to consider public comment on the county's community development brought block grant contract with the New York State Office of Community Renewal for a countywide micro enterprise program. Pointing member to the Livingston County Traffic Safety Board, William Coin. Pointing member to the Livingston County Water and Sewer Authority Board, Donald T. Higgins. Resolution calling on the governor and New York State legislative leaders to restore redundancy to county sales tax. Adopting revisions to the Livingston County purchasing policy.
Thank you. I'll ask at this time if there's any discussion of the resolutions on the preferred agenda. Hearing no discussion, I'd ask for a motion in a second on those. No move?
Second, yeah.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Carry the roll, please, Michelle.
Avon, Caledonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Brooklyn.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 2009 adopted.
Next, we have, um, separate resolutions that will be presented for your consideration.
Mrs. Walker, authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation, Workfit Medical LLC, Battle Licensed Practical Nursing P LLC, MedCor Staffing Inc., and Health System Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. I'll ask if there's any questions on this resolution. Hearing none, uh, roll, please, Michelle.
Avon, Caledonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Brooklyn.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 2009 adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following grant award contract for the Livingston County Department of Health, New York State Department of Health.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution. Hearing none, uh, roll, please, Michelle.
Avon, Caledonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Brooklyn.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 2009 adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Department of Social Services, Northwoods Consulting Partners Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. I'll ask if there's any, uh, questions or discussion on this contract. Hearing none, uh, roll, please, Michelle.
Avon, Caledonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Brooklyn.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 2009 adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Office of Workforce Development Bureau, Catholic Charities of Livingston County, Cornell Cooperative Extension of Livingston County, Stillside Children's Center Inc., Legal Aid Society of Rochester Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. I'll ask if there's any questions on these contracts. Hearing none, uh, roll, please, Michelle.
Avon, Caledonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Brooklyn.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 2009 adopted. Mr. Demming, authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for Livingston County for electricity used by Livingston County buildings through a contract awarded by Genesee County, Constellation New Energy Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this, uh, resolution. Hearing none, uh, roll, please, Michelle.
Avon, Caledonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Brooklyn.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 2009 adopted. Awarding bid for the Central Services Department for natural gas used by Livingston County buildings, UTI Energy Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution. Hearing none, uh, roll, please, Michelle.
Avon, Caledonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Brooklyn.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 2009 adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for Livingston County, Livingston County Area Chamber of Commerce.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. I'll ask at this time if there's any questions on this contract. Hearing none, uh, roll, please, Michelle.
Avon, Caledonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Brooklyn.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 2009 adopted. Authorizing a professional services contract for the Livingston County Mobility Management Strategy, Transpro Consulting LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution. Hearing none, uh, roll, please, Michelle.
Avon, Caledonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Brooklyn.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 2009 adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following grant award contract for the Livingston County Planning Department, New York State Energy Research and Development Authority, NACRO.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. I'll ask if there's any discussion on this resolution. Hearing none, uh, roll, please, Michelle.
Avon, Caledonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Brooklyn.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 2009 adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract extension for the Livingston County Public Defender, New York State Office of Indigent Legal Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. I'll ask if there's any discussion or questions on this resolution. Hearing none, uh, roll, please, Michelle.
Avon, Caledonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Brooklyn.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
Westfarta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 2009 adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Sheriff's Office, New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. I'll ask if there's any discussion or questions on this resolution. Hearing none, uh, roll, please, Michelle.
Avon, Caledonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Brooklyn.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris. Evan, Teladonian, Canisus, Geneseo, Groblin, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 2009 adopted. Mr. Pangrazio, amending the 2020 Livingston County Budget, Central Services, there are two Department of Social Services, there are two planning, there's one, and Sheriff's Department, there are four.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution. During non-oral, please Michelle.
Evan, Teladonian, Canisus, Geneseo, Groblin, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 2009 adopted. Authorizing transfer of funds, central services, personnel, probation, and sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on these transfers. During non-oral, please Michelle.
Evan, Teladonian, Canisus, Geneseo, Groblin, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 2009 adopted. Authorizing lease with the Town of Geneseo.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this lease. During non-oral, please Michelle.
Evan, Teladonian, Canisus, Geneseo, Groblin, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 2009 adopted. Authorizing lease with Person-Centered Services Care Coordination Organization LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. I'll also ask, is there any questions on this lease? During non-oral, please Michelle.
Evan, Teladonian, Canisus, Geneseo, Groblin, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 2009 adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign a tower lease agreement with Merck TTL.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this tower lease. During non-oral, please Michelle.
Evan, Teladonian, Canisus, Geneseo, Groblin, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 2009 adopted. Amending a portion of Resolution Number 2022-03.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution. During non-oral, please Michelle.
Evan, Teladonian, Canisus, Geneseo, Groblin, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 2009 adopted. Approving estimated 2021 sales tax distribution.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution. During non-oral, please Michelle.
Evan, Teladonian, Canisus, Geneseo, Groblin, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 2009 adopted. Providing levy of erroneous taxes to be charged to town.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. I'll ask if there's any discussion or questions on this resolution. During non-oral, please Michelle.
Evan, Teladonian, Canisus, Geneseo, Groblin, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 2009 adopted. Livingston County's Treasurer Trust and Agency Reconciliations for the Year 2020 Account Closure.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. I'll ask if there's any discussion or questions on this resolution. During non-oral, please Michelle.
Evan, Teladonian, Canisus, Geneseo, Groblin, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 2009 adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Department of Health, Various Preschool Providers.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. I'll ask if there's any discussion or questions on this resolution. During non-oral, please Michelle.
Evan, Teladonian, Canisus, Geneseo, Groblin, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 2009 adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following professional services contract for the Livingston County Planning Department, Inbridge Systematic
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. Ask at this time if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution. During non-oral, please Michelle.
Evan, Teladonian, Canisus, Geneseo, Groblin, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 2009 adopted. Appointing Director of Social Work Services for the Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation, Jessica Werner.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this appointment. During non-oral, please Michelle.
Evan, Teladonian, Canisus, Geneseo, Groblin, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 2009 adopted.
Yes, congratulations, Jessica. Would you like to say a few words?
I was not prepared to say anything at all, but I just thank you, and I can't wait to do it one more time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Amending the 2020 Livingston County Salary Schedule, Economic Development, Information and Technology Services, and Perfect.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution. During non-oral, please Michelle.
Evan, Teladonian, Canisus, Geneseo, Groblin, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 2009 adopted. Establishing ratios for the year 2020.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. I'll ask if there's any discussion, questions on this resolution. During non-oral, please Michelle.
Evan, Teladonian, Canisus, Geneseo, Groblin, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 2009 adopted. Authorizing Director of Rural Property Tax Services to add taxes on various 2021 common tax rules.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution. During non-oral, please Michelle.
Evan, Teladonian, Canisus, Geneseo, Groblin, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 2009 adopted. Authorizing Assessment Role Putting 2020.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. I'll ask if there's any discussion, questions on this resolution. None, or here none, please Michelle.
Evan, Teladonian, Canisus, Geneseo, Groblin, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 2009 adopted. Authorizing the Director of Rural Property Tax Services to apply corrections for taxes on various 2021 common tax rules.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution. During non-oral, please Michelle.
Evan, Teladonian, Canisus, Geneseo, Groblin, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 2009 adopted. Directing the Rural Property Tax Director to spread unpaid water charges and unpaid sewer charges on the 2021 tax rolls, Livingston County Water and Sewer Stores.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. I'll ask at this time if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution. Yes, Deb?
I'm questioning, we're going to section 1199, why, why, why? Did we forget a year, or is this correct?
Oh, Bill, I'm sorry, yes. Yes, please, Bill.
Yes, that is correct. That law has several, several sections, and the why, why, why is correct. There, there's several, all the public authorities in New York State fall under that.
Thank you. Any, any other questions on this resolution? During non-oral, please Michelle.
Evan, Teladonian, Canisus, Geneseo, Groblin, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 2009 adopted.
We still have two public hearings open at this time. I'll ask if there's any member of the public wishing to comment on either public hearing at this time. I'll ask if there's any member of the Board of Supervisors wishing to comment on either public hearing at this time. During non-oral, declare both public hearings closed, then we'll proceed with the resolution. Please Michelle.
Mr. Demme, adopting secret negative declaration for 303B additions to existing agricultural districts.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution. During non-oral, please Michelle.
Evan, Teladonian, Canisus, Geneseo, Groblin, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 2009 adopted. Approving 303B addition to existing agricultural districts.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. I'll ask if there's any questions or concerns on these additions. During non-oral, please Michelle.
Evan, Teladonian, Canisus, Geneseo, Groblin, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 2009 adopted. Mr. Pangrazio, adopting budget for fiscal year 2021.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. I'll ask if there's any questions on this resolution. During non-oral, please Michelle.
Evan, Teladonian, Canisus, Geneseo, Groblin, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 2009 adopted. Authorizing appropriation of 2021 adopted budget.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. I'll ask at this time if there's any questions, discussion on this resolution. During non-oral, please Michelle.
Evan, Teladonian, Canisus, Geneseo, Groblin, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anzo, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 2009 adopted.
I'd like to ask county administrators, we have some updates for the board this time.
Yes, Chairman, thank you. Just a couple of quick ones. The COVID announcements today that came through from the governor didn't really impact the county per se. Counties around us certainly, you know, Western New York is a hotspot right now, Erie County in particular, highest percentage positive rates in the entire state, certainly in upstate. Places like Hamburg, Orchard Park City, Buffalo, Tonawanda, kind of approaching that 8%, 9% positivity. So they are potential movement to those different cluster zones than they are right now. Yellow would be low, orange, red, we're not yet at any of those. However, the day drop today was the largest single active case count. Today was 30, so we got 30 new active positives today. So if you're from, you guys are familiar with our tracking over the whole pandemic's timeframe, there was a time when our largest, you know, active as a whole was in the 30s. So now we're probably in the 70s or 80s as far as total active cases in the whole county, with 30 new coming in today and not 30 coming off today. Have had some cluster activity in certain areas. The latest unfortunately is in Alpine Manor. The senior living place does have about 16, 17 cases right now. We have had some staff positives, we've had a couple of nursing home resident positives. So the, the level of the community spread is far greater and more pronounced than it was before, so we continue to kind of emphasize all of that, those guidance and protocols that we have since the start of the pandemic. So just wanted to report on that, not the greatest news in the world to report, but I got to make sure we put it out there that, you know, certainly the largest single day positive dump was today, and we're now far beyond our largest active case count on a, on a regular basis right now. And hospitalizations are on the uptick as well. So hospitalizations as, as the region goes, our control room call yesterday, they're up 50% from the control room call last Tuesday, and I think they're over 200, and they're close to max capacity of both the RGH system and URMC in Monroe County at least. So something to be mindful of is the, you know, holiday approaches and the, you know, more activities and more people out and about, so. We will be doing, finally on that, we will be doing, we haven't done a lot of exposure alerts because we usually have had pretty good either contact tracing efforts or participation amongst people. Remember, early on, we did a couple like wagmans or county office buildings, so we will be doing one that we're working on right now affiliated with Danville, but it was kind of like a community dinner gathering of sorts with a, a community group where the cook or some affiliate is, is a positive, so we want to make sure anybody that participated in that, I'm not sure if it was a chicken barbecue or one of these type things, want to make sure that the community is aware that that's positive, so we will be putting that out today.
Just one question on the COVID monitoring and public outreach. Apparently, the Livingston County News is now going to pay family gas today where they can go on the county website to find the clustering information, if it's there, where, where I should tell them to go to look at it.
Yeah.
I know the map is available, is clustering, apparently they, they used to report on clustering on the, on their online version.
Yes.
And now that it's going to cost people money, people are indicating that maybe it's easier if the county had a place where people could go. And I know Julie does a great job with public relations, if there is a place, specific place, maybe we could put that out in public as another release.
Yeah, yeah, there, there is, so I would point her to, which is frankly not up there yet, which I think the document they're talking about, I would eventually, they'll point people to the website, they hit that COVID cluster, they get to that resource page, what I think people will start looking for that they looked for on LCN, which is not on our page, I think is an easy link ad, I think I know what they're talking about, we can just add it to our page.
Yeah, and I'll let them know that we're going to work on that, but that team, I got a message today and I told her I'd be back to her, so, thank you.
Is there any other business coming before the board this afternoon?
Mr. Chairman Pangrazio?
Oh. I, I'm requesting permission to address the board briefly. As some of you already know, I have passed the word on to a few of my fellow supervisors, but I think that it's worthy to pass on to all of the supervisors here in the county and to the county administrator as well. I was a, well, a subject of a scam, the Down of Kinesis. My email was attacked, it was passed on to our accountant requesting that I, as the supervisor, move $3,000 to, it was given, the accountant was giving, bank account number and a routing number. And it made it look like that I actually had talked to this person who generated the scam. It was very, very well orchestrated. I wanted to say kudos to not only our accountant, but our IT professionals and our webpage and email professionals for keeping the Down of Kinesis safe. We were not compromised in any way, we were, we were on it quickly, reported it to the proper officials, and it has been directed. The other thing is, just beware of, a, a day or two later, we were receiving phishing emails of, it looked like our email professionals to change our passwords, asking for information and, and to, and our passwords were going to expire. Again, we were on top of it, the professionals were on top of it as well, and proper steps taken. So I just want to let everyone know what has happened and that to beware, and I hope we take proper steps to prevent anything like that, so. Thank you. Any questions or concerns?
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. Is there any other business to come before the board?
Mr. Chairman Pangrazio?
Second, may I ask?
We have a motion and a second, always in favor.
Aye.